I guess I'm third if we could call the regular meeting of the emeritus exempted Board of Education to order, please, by standing in the presence of the flag. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Mr. Engel.
Present.
Mr. Zappa.
Present.
Mrs. Gillis.
Present.
Dr. Messer.
Present.
Mrs. Wackels.
Here.
Item four, we entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, including any addendums that you received today.
My men.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackels.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi.
Item five, hearing in the public, has anyone signed up to address this this evening?
No.
No one has signed up to address this, so we'll keep right on moving. We'll go to item six, the treasurer's report. Madam Treasurer?
Yes. Good evening. Welcome to the guests in the audience. I don't usually have the benefit of having guests in the audience when I present the forecast. It's not usually what draws guests. This evening though, you can go ahead, I will be presenting the November 2023 five-year forecast, which covers the fiscal years 2024, the current year, through fiscal 2028, which is the fifth year of the forecast. Go ahead. So the five-year forecast, you guys have heard some of this before, but the five-year forecast is a statutory requirement of Ohio Vice Code Section 5705.391 and Ohio Administrative Code as well. The five-year forecast is submitted twice annually, November and May. A lesser-known fact is that the forecast can be updated and submitted at any time to Ohio DEW at any time. All right, go ahead. The forecast should be perceived as a planning document. We utilize the data to identify consistencies and to plan for change. It's a roadmap of sort, which breaks revenues and expenditure into specific categories, which makes it easier to identify areas of consistency, concern, or even those areas for improvement. Go ahead. We have obstacles, of course. And what are some of those obstacles? We have an inflationary economy, fuel, utilities, increasing need for additional services, repair parts, et cetera, increasing healthcare costs, including double-digit renewal increases. A lesser-known movement that's moving around the state teacher retirement system is they may require an increase in the board paid retirement, which is currently 14%, to increase incrementally half a percent over a year until it gets to 18%. So that would be a substantial impact. That's an obstacle, but it's nothing that we can actually put numbers to in the forecast because we don't know yet that it could happen. Growth and enrollment shifts also would be obstacles on our journey. Not all obstacles are detrimental obstacles. Some of them are certainly beneficial for the district. Go ahead. So what's affecting the forecast this year? We have all kinds of things affecting the forecast. We have the end of the federal grant revenue streams, coronavirus relief funds, SRR, SRR two, and then the American Rescue Plan, ARB, SRR three, which is a total of $2,662,000, of which we have the remaining 890 or 900,000 to spend this year, but it definitely must be spent by December of 2024. We should have it spent probably by July of '24, I'm anticipating. What else? We have funding changes, revenue, we have deductions, inflation. Again, I mentioned that in every forecast in the last probably 18 months. It's really affecting fuel, repair parts, tuition, special services, any of our purchase services, anything that needs to be transported, right? Fuel surcharges and things like that. Go ahead. So here's where we move to showing the consistency in our revenues in the district. The big, the exploded high chart shows our actual revenues from last fiscal year. The big blue piece of the pie on the right, more than 46% of our revenue is local in nature. That is line 101, which is general property tax line. The large gray section opposite the blue is our unrestricted grants and aid. That's line 1035, and that is commonly referred to as our foundation or our basic aid. If you go to the next slide, fiscal '28, it's too much to put on one slide, I tried. But you can see in fiscal '28, again, the final year of the forecast, the blue section, general property tax, is expected to be over 42% and unrestricted is supposed to grow beyond 38%. But between the two, they are over 80%. Just two revenue streams represent 80% or more of our revenue streams. And you can't create revenue streams in school districts. You've got a limited number of revenue streams. General property tax, public utility, personal property, unrestricted aid, which is the foundation aid, restricted foundation aid, which we'll talk about that more later, and then you have the state reimbursements for homestead and rollback, which show in property tax reimbursements. And then you have some other revenue, which right now is substantial. There are a lot of different items that make up local revenue, excuse me, miscellaneous revenue. The largest revenue stream happens in the investment income. And we've been really thoughtfully matching investments to the five-year forecast and cash flow needs in the district so we can maximize on investment income. Go ahead, next slide. So this is our local revenue, and the pillars in red is actual from fiscal '17 to '23. Last year, we received, I believe, $13,770,000 in local tax revenue, and it's expected... I'm sorry, that's not it. We received $17,770,000 in local revenue in line 101 last year, and we're expecting to see valuation increases. In fact, the reappraisal for most of the counties in the state has been somewhere around 30%. And we won't know this yet because our reappraisal for Lurie County is 2024, but undoubtedly, any increases in valuation will generate growth and inside knowledge. There are some modest increases built into line 101. In year '28, you see a dip in the revenue there. That is because the renewal levy is modeled on line 1102. Go ahead. So the unrestricted grants and aid, I've told you this, is foundation revenue. Unrestricted aid is a portion to each school district based on many factors and creates a truly complex funding equation. Factors include enrollment, local wealth, or valuation capacity, and that is the local ability to generate revenue is what capacity is. Students with special needs play into the funding factor, and then there are many other factors that you probably don't care to hear me speak of this evening. The Fair School Funding Plan, though, implemented midway through fiscal '22, was pretty revenue-neutral for us for fiscal '22 and all last year. But this year, due to House Bill 33, which continued phase-in of the Fair School Funding Plan, it updated cost factors, maintained the local capacity formula, and what that has generated for us is the likelihood that we will collect over $15.1 million this year in revenue for line 1035. The next slide is line 104. This is restricted grants and aid. Now, the restricted is, it includes our funding for English language learners, gifted, disadvantaged, career tech, and there's one other category. See what happened in fiscal '22 when it was below 400,000 and previous to that, it was below 200,000? Again, that was the Fair School Funding Plan implemented midway through fiscal '22, and then fiscal '23 was our first year of full funding with the Fair School Funding Plan for these categories. And it's nearly, it's going to be $864,000 this year, based on what we've received so far and what we yet to receive according to the settlement reports that I'm receiving from DEW. And I just wanted to put this white arrow because that's a material change in the way our revenue is presented. These funding categories previously, for the most part, were part of line 1035. So the total amount we're receiving from the Fair School Funding Plan is spread between line 1035 and 104, unrestricted and restricted. We intend, assume, forecast, project, whatever you want to say, all throughout fiscal '28 that we're going to be receiving similar funding levels from DEW with the Fair School Funding Plan. Go ahead. So let's turn our attention to expenditures. Our expenditures, like this first exploded high chart, is for fiscal '23. These are actual figures ending June 30th of 2023. The next slide, similarly, will be fiscal '28 projected expenditures. You'll see that expenditures for, prior slide, please, Sarah. Personnel services or compensation is expected to exceed 58, nearly 58.5% this year, and retirement benefits and insurance fringes, et cetera, are expected to exceed 20%. In fiscal '28, it increases. Go ahead and flip. Personnel services are expected to exceed 61%, and benefits, insurance, et cetera, are expected to reach nearly 23%. Now, what I want to say about that is, in the forecast, I have another slide, but we'll get to that in a second, our compensation calculations are very detailed for the first three years. They're very detailed for all five years of the forecast, but we do know for '24, '25, and '26 what our negotiated agreements are. We know what the step costs, how many employees have extended days, what are administrators' costs, what are classified staff costs, what are substitutes are expected to be. So for '24, '25, and '26, for all of the district, the experience step is calculated in addition to the base increases that we know of right now, but year '27 and '28, as is the way I always forecast, only the step increases are calculated in those two years. Go ahead to the next. So our major expenditures, salary and fringes, the first two categories, and then purchase services, and I always give this to you because purchase services is becoming a larger share of our forecast expenditures, and we have very little control over our purchase services expenditures. They exceed 90% in fiscal '23 and expect to be 95%. Those three categories alone, expected to be 95% of the budget in fiscal '28. Next. Now, this is the detailed compensation calculation I prepared for the forecast period. So we have retirements modeled for fiscal '24, fiscal '25, excuse me. We have several certified personnel and one classified personnel who is retiring at some point during this year, and those severances are actual calculations for certified severance and classified severance. And in fiscal '25, I have reduced the, by the first line, the wages of the four retiring certified personnel, and those are the only assumptions that we have in this calculation for retirements. Now, we know, going back 12 years, Mr. Sayers was here, and we had declining enrollment. We hadn't previously rightsized the district, so we were able to effect reductions in expenditures through attrition. Attrition is replacing those who don't retire. And in any cases where we can implement that, we will, but there are certain certified staff who teach very specific subjects, or CCP, or AP, or things like that, where we cannot not replace them. So there's sometimes a shuffling. Sometimes we can benefit through attrition and other times we can't. So there will be an opportunity during the forecast period to have compensation line positively benefited through retirement. We just don't know what they are. These, again, are things that I know of at this point in time. You can see that salaries calculate with the federal grants deducted to $29.6 million in fiscal '28. Next slide. Again, these are detailed retirement fringe calculations for last year and the entire forecast period. For retirement, I have calculated 14%, and that is 14% of the previous page, 14% of the compensation levels for each year on the previous slide. Retirement is 14% currently. Again, there could change. Medicare is 1.45%. That's another calculated amount. It increases as salaries increase. Healthcare expenditures here, I have reached out to the consultant for LUR, Lake Yeared Regional Council of Governments, the insurance consortium to which we belong, and he feels that 8% is a good renewal amount to use throughout the forecast. That is the percentage I've always used because it is more of an industry average for insurance renewals. I thought maybe we should forecast higher because our last year's renewals have been nine and a half and nine. He said eight seems good, so we stuck with eight. Dental, it's a relatively immaterial sum in the forecast, but I've just projected 2% increases there. Life is relatively static. Vision is new to the district come January 1st of 2024. Half a year is reflected in '24 and a full year, really without any increases. I have nothing to go on. We've never offered vision insurance before. Workers' comp, that's really just throwing spaghetti at the wall because I have no clue what their workers' comp premiums are going to be for the next five years. And unemployment, again, it's just a figure. Our unemployment compensation doesn't, we're a direct reimburse to workers' compensation, or, excuse me, to unemployment, and this is about what it's been the last couple of years. So you look at the calculator retirement benefits line, goes from 8.4 million to 11.1 million. These are including our current staffing levels. I haven't worked any retirements. I haven't changed any staffing levels, nothing. I haven't assumed that STRS is going to increase to 18%. There's all different kinds of things you could assume, but they're not worked into here. Go ahead. We have unknown factors. Again, we talked about healthcare, but healthcare costs are outpacing market inflation. 8% projected renewal is likely not enough, so we talked about this tonight. If the renewal is more than 8%, I've said it's likely not enough. Go ahead. We've talked about inflation, and inflation's impacting everything. It could affect all expenditure categories. We see increases in utilities. Our utilities expense for electric is going to exceed $850,000 this year, just electric. Gas is about 200,000, and water is, I think, under $80,000. Our supplies and our materials continue to increase. Our custodial supplies, cleaners, paper, I mean, paper products, paper towels, copy paper is exorbitant, and it's growing at a much faster pace than inflation. Instructional supplies are growing. Go ahead. So here's a snip of the forecast. It is difficult to see, but if you turn to the first page after the assumptions, you'll find the portrait view of the forecast. There are also forecasts over on the table for our guests if they'd like to see them. The next view of it is a landscape view, which is much easier to see. One thing that I want to point out about the forecast, and this is a methodology, and not everybody agrees with the methodology. I'm conservative. I'm conservative in all of my revenue projections. I feel like this is less conservative in forecasting revenue than I ever do. But revenues are forecasted conservatively, and we try to calculate our forecasted expenditures as accurately as possible. So what typically happens is that the actual turns out more favorable than the forecast reflects it. That's typically it. If it didn't happen that way, I'm the treasurer CFO of the district. It's my reputation if I incorrectly forecast, incorrectly forecast expenditures that come in much higher. So conservatism is the approach here. Our revenues are calculated conservatively and perhaps smaller than they'll come in at, and our expenditures are calculated as accurately as what is possible, based on what I know today. Next. This is my final slide in every presentation, and what's neat is that we have all of these years of actual data from fiscal '15, and then we have through fiscal '23, those are actual numbers, and then we have the forecasting periods on the right side. And what this is showing in blue is our total revenues, and then in orange are the total expenditures, both actual through fiscal '23 and forecasted, and the bold yellow line is the cash balance. What that yellow line shows is depletion of cash balances. And again, it goes along with conservative approach to forecasting. Be conservative with revenues, as actual as possible with expenditures, and it's going to show a decrease in cash balance. Go ahead. There's one thing that I did prepare that I wanted to share with you. Revenue streams to all districts really are standard. Local revenue and state aid represent the bulk. The statutory funding mechanism in Ohio is insufficient to properly fund public schools without finding other new revenue streams and/or curtailing expenditures. We have a legislature that has passed legislation in the last couple of years that is public school-averse. The board member sitting on my right is the legislative guru for the board, and I hear her, feel her, agree with me. And then the epilogue is part of my transmittal letter and forecast assumptions. Financial projections in this document or any forecast are based on the assumptions on an indeterminate number of variables. It is virtually unrealistic to predict with any certainty the outcomes of revenue and expenditures, of which there is very little control. We would need the skills and knowledge to predict sickness, the weather, the stock market, global economy, financial markets, inflation, and monetary policy, the detrimental impact of legislation in the state of Ohio, and the gross domestic product of this country for the next four years. One essentially needs a crystal ball. It is not an exact science. The assumptions that drive projections can change immediately, altering the financial forecast. This is a projection. This is a look into the future based on what I know right now. Next. As always, this is like a month-long process, and I thank the superintendent, I thank the board, I thank the finance audit committee we met last week to review this, the staff at the district office, Hady was helping me collate everything this afternoon, and then really, your assistance and insight is appreciated in the methodology that we use to prepare this five-year forecast. Does anybody have any questions?
I do have a question. I kind of, is this for you or is this for you?
And I invited Mr. Mullin to jump in at any time, so...
So I know in the past, when we've done the budget or forecast, we've always had a certain percentage that we wanted salaries and benefits to not exceed a certain percentage of the total budget. Do you have one, or do you, I'm just curious?
I can say from experience from 20 years in school finance that most districts, their salary and fringe benefits, so mine, 3.01 and 3.02, exceed 20% of the budget. That is highly unusual in any other business. It's just, it's just not like that. I've worked in districts where salary benefits were 93% of the total budget, and if we're sitting somewhere around 80 to 82%, I think that's a comfortable position to be in.
I was going to say the same thing. I mean, I think the standard, our feel is good to have between 80 and 85%. Like, when you start going over 85%, that's obviously going to be an issue. So I think right now, you're at 79% or close to 80%, but it is going to start increasing, so it's a possibility.
Anything else?
I have no question.
Thank you.
You have some recommendations as well?
Like you haven't heard enough from me. Go ahead. So this evening, I'm asking for the board to approve the minutes from the October 16th regular board meeting and the approval of three special meetings on October 18th, 24th, and November 8th. I have the financials from September and October. Just to refresh, there's a cash reconciliation, two pages, shows the cash reconciliation, all the account balances, and then below it, a fund level cash balance. Then there's a thin sum, five-page, six-page document that shows every fund and every special call center, the year-to-date activity, current fund balance, encumbrances, unencumbered balance, et cetera. The forecast reports for general fund and '16 emergency levy fund. Refresh your memory, those show budgets for the year, what we've received year-to-date, month-to-date, and those are also sorted by five-year forecast line. And then the fourth document for each of the months is an AP, direct disbursements and check register. Pardon me. Go ahead. There are none announced, just one, to approve, two appropriations, revisions, advance of funds, and those are from the general fund, two federal grants, the five-year forecast for fiscal year '24 through '28, and finally, donations. Anybody have any questions?
Let's take a motion. First, seven, eight, and eight, first and second. Questions for the treasurer on any of these items that she has presented to you this evening? Digest them and come up with any concerns that you may have. No questions, comments, we're all happy. Call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Mrs. Wackels.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Mr. Mullin, you have the superintendent for course this evening.
Yeah, first, I'd like to, I just wanted to take a moment to highlight some of the fall sports accomplishments. Again, it's amazing to me what our students can do every single year, how far they excel. So these were presented at the Fall Sports Awards banquet, but if you weren't there, I want to share with us the board... but if you weren't there, I want to share with us the board and also just with the community itself. So, you know, for Southwest Conference Champions, we had Boys Cross Country and Boys Golf, and also individually Ty Perez on the Boys Cross Country team. Uh, it's just kind of cool. For example, Boys Golf had a phenomenal season. It's their second championship in school history, the last one in nineteen ninety-seven. And for the Boys Cross Country, it's really cool that it's their third championship in the last four years, including the last two years back-to-back. So that was just a really exciting thing. And for Ty Perez, he was the first male in SWC to win three uh cross-country championships individually. So what, what a great honor for him. And then you see we have some state qualifiers as well with Boys Cross Country team, also Captain Lowe individually from Girls Cross Country, and also our All-Ohio athletes, Luke Bolzby for Boys Cross Country and also Cecily winning the volleyball. So just a great, great fall season for our sports. And also just want to highlight too the school records that we had, because again, it's amazing what our students can do. So you can see the list up there. Again, Ty Perez with a new uh five K school record across country, Colton Norris with a single game passing record of four hundred and ten yards. Boys Golf with their nine-hole record against Alon Lake. Prince Tran and Ryan Yoder with again, a phenomenal golf season with three under par on the front nine, two different golfing events. Camille Coleman with her thirty goals scored, which is now a record for the most goals scored by a girl, girl soccer in Amherst, and also Jonathan with a hundred thirty-three saves um in soccer, which was for a twenty-year-old. So again, it's just, it's just awesome to see our students succeed so well in this fall event and then looking forward to the winter sports as well. Also want to highlight too, um, if you weren't able to make it to our National Honor Society awards a few weeks ago, we had eighty-five new members, which I don't think we keep track of the number, but it's one of our largest groups considering that um we had forty-three current National Honor Society students introduced them. And what I really love about the event is each student gets called up one at a time from the crowd up on stage. There's a nice um description um about their activities and their service, which is announced and then there's a ceremony and exchange with a current National Honor Society member and just, you know, I'm so pleased that it's done with intention for every single student recognized, because it'd be so easy to have eighty-five students recognize quickly, please stand, whatever. So it's just, it's just awesome to say that. So um, we're never make it, we'll make it in the future. Next, I want to just take a quick moment to talk about giving update for Capitol Projects. Uh, this U-ten was passed, which is a great thing for our district moving forward. Uh, as you know, the Transportation Center is on the list to be completed and also some athletic upgrades. Where we're at right now, again, we just had issue ten pass, but we're already making strides to move forward. The board's aware that GPD group architects, um, they're in the process of scheduling meeting with our transportation staff to get, gather input. So it's gonna be happening probably after Thanksgiving here in a few, a few weeks. I have a meeting with Amherst Township trustee Neil Lynch on Wednesday just to talk about the possibility of, or the great possibility of putting Transportation Center on our Dewey Road property. I just want to start getting conversation with the township about, you know, whatever process we might need to do, especially zoning and so forth. So I'm meeting with him on Wednesday. GPD is, I think you've heard, is recommending to do a survey of the Dewey Road property and also to update a site investigation. And we had that study done twenty years ago when the property was purchased, but you know, although we've done nothing really at the site for twenty years, geologically things could have changed. So we, we probably need to do another site study if we're gonna put the Transportation Center there. I've also started scheduling meetings with nonprofit organizations and companies to look into zero emission buses, whether they be electric or pro-frame. Of course, we lean toward electric, but um, you know, not only the, the electric bus, it's also the infrastructure for, again, I don't know where we'll be in the next fifteen, twenty years as far as all cars being electric, I, you know, I have no idea. But I think it'd be wise if we're building Transportation Center to look into what it would take to get some of those things in, in place in case that does happen. Also, there are plenty of different federal and state grants out there. So again, I have a couple of conversations with nonprofit organizations that help, you know, complete grants and so on, and also companies which are interested in helping, helping schools and other businesses looking to do it. So we're going down that, that road as well to investigate that. And also I think the board's heard from GPD, it believes all of that happening is really to do it right. It's about six months to get, to get to the point where we're requesting proposals and bids from actual companies to do the work. And I, I honestly, I don't think there's any scenarios anyone thought we could right now build Transportation Center, house forty buses, have it open before the start of next school year. I mean, I, no one's thinking down that road. It's just gonna take a lot longer, plus we have winters in Ohio. So um, so the goal would be to go through this process, do it right, uh, get the bids in, make the decision, and then probably open it when it starts school in two thousand twenty-five. And then, Brian Lynch, really quick, you know, um, I'd like to, for Casey Wolf, Wolf and I uh, reach out to our head coaches and said, please meet with your staff, assistant coaches, the people you work with regarding your specific uh sports, and as you with the stadium or tennis courts. And then we're gonna meet with all the head coaches to bring their input and their thoughts in together all as we start moving down that path. Uh, we're also gonna be with support groups and community athletic organizations as well to gather their input, because again, we don't have rec department in Amherst, so all of our community's sports, athletics organizations use our stadium, our tennis courts, et cetera. So we want to make sure we get their input as well for pickleball or whatever we need to do to look into. And again, we're already contacting companies and vendors to come out. Uh, we, I probably have half dozens to dozen site visits already scheduled for December. Again, we're not down the path to pick people, but to get any vendor company who's interested in looking at these projects, whether it's fencing, whether it's stands, whether it's a field, whether it's tennis courts, lighting, um, we're bringing them in to look at all the possibilities and then also give us some cost proposals and ideas so we can start having real, even more concrete information as we move forward to start getting those kinds of requests for proposals. Again, same thing, I know we're getting a lot of questions from the community about when can these things be completed, but um with athletics, it's just like with Transportation Center. There's, you know, there's a lot of work goes, goes involved in doing right, playing it out, getting the proper input, make sure everyone's voice is heard. But also, you know, you talk about a lot of these, a lot of these projects are going on every year and every summer. So um, even if we were to get some things accomplished, a lot of um, the supplies and materials, construction, whatever it may be, could be difficult to acquire. And also it's like some of the vendors that we were looking at that we want to work with because they're top in their field, um, you know, I know a couple of companies are working at Ohio State this summer. So again, they're in the same mindset of, let's do this right, and this is probably gonna be completed for the fall this year, not something nine months from now, eight months from now. Probably not gonna happen. So just want to give you an update on that as well. So do you have any questions about any of those items or, yes, ma'am?
Um, for, when we leave off the process of the athletic facilities, in particular the field, are we gonna look into having some medical professionals or someone speedball turf so we can, you know, address those concerns?
Yeah, I, yeah, I've already talked to Casey, because we look at the field, look to possibly do a turf. We would bring in some groups or professionals to talk about um the different, because there's various different kinds of turf. Um, I've said from the beginning, I've told the board this as well, if we could go on the path of turf, we would want, of course, the best product for our kids. Well, we're not looking to save costs by going with a specific product, so um, we would definitely want.
But I know, just to follow up with that conversation, I don't think turf is in this round of upgrades. Is that correct? Because I don't believe that it was above us. I mean, from, from what we've heard, a little bit of turf discussion and OSBA, it's millions and we don't have those millions in there. So I don't know that turf is going to be on the drawing board toward this part of the athletic upgrade. Correct me if I am speaking out of.
Everything is, you know, everything's on the table. It depends on, again, what costs are, because again, as costs come in, uh, in our environment that we're in right now, there are some things that kind of maybe put on pause. So when we get those different costs and those different uh ideas and things in, we will, we will then have to eventually create a list of priority items.
But I don't think, I don't think that we advertise or campaign that we're gonna do turf in that respective.
Yeah, but that's been a lot of.
But it's been a lot of talk, but I'm just saying, I, you know, it'll be interesting to see, because I think that we can get some prices of that. Just from what I have heard, it's astounding what the price of turf is. And it goes up every year. And the maintenance of it is also a huge cost factor every year in that respect. So I, I'm not gonna share any numbers, I mean, I spoke to two or three different people just because I knew that that was gonna be a topic of concern.
But I will say it's pretty amazing how, like, they're really good stuff and you can't hardly tell that it's turf.
For one, I'll just like.
Yes, I'll just like.
It's soft. It felt great.
Yep.
Any other question about the board?
There's a lot of work ahead there.
We're moving as fast as we can, but gonna do it right.
Any other report for us this evening or anything else you'd like to say in this room?
No, I'm ready to pass on to the assistant. Go for it, sir.
My turn. Um, a couple of things I want to share with you that have been going on over the past few weeks in two of our buildings. Both HAH and STEEL last week and the week prior had been doing their signs of suicide screening. This is now um training and, and instruction in suicide prevention is now mandatory for grade six through twelve with the House Bill one twenty-three, the Safe Schools Act. Want to share with you that Amherst has been doing the SOS screenings for ten-plus years. So it, it was a real natural thing that, that we've been doing. We engage um our partner, mental health agencies with Ohio Guide Stone, the Rain County Mars Board. Day one is always instruction where they go into classrooms and, and teach about suicide prevention and things. Day two is the, the actual screening. And it's not just screening for necessarily suicide, it's, it's for any markers that are at risk. And the students then get tiered based on the, the answers that they gave. But then each, each and every student has a mental health person who debriefs with them, whether it's a counselor, whether it's from someone from Ohio Guide Stone or the Mental Health Board or one of our social workers. All of our students are, they sit down with them and go over their answers and talk about, make sure they're connected to someone. And so it's, it's, it's really great to know that we've been doing this and yet now pays off. Uh, the other thing is we have in HAH, a few weeks ago, they did Start With Hello. They spent a whole week doing different activities. We start with hello and this is part of the Sandy Hook Promise and helps teach and promote social inclusion among the kids. Where step one, recognizing the signs of loneliness and isolation um in their peer, peer groups, then trying to find ways to make others feel included, but then what, what do they do when they see a child who is being left out? And so how do they go about breaking the ice? How do they go about starting that conversation? Um, HAH did this a few weeks ago and STEEL is planning with their Wellness Week in January to, to make this part of what they do. So then we will have had grade six through eight all go through the Start With, Start With Hello. So that's pretty great. And then the only other thing I want to share with you today is that our Special Olympics group is doing a fundraiser on December second. It's going to be breakfast with Santa. Um, over in the STEEL High School cafeteria on December second from nine to noon, Santa will be there for pictures. Um, there'll be some activities for kids and it's gonna be twenty dollars per family and those proceeds will go to our Special Olympics program. So there's a little QR code there if you want to register. So, any questions for me? Amanda, Dr. Messer?
So for this one, if you're not able to make that, is there other ways to join me?
I'm sure if you click the link or, or scan the QR code or contact at our Special Olympics at amherstk twelve dot org, um, you'll be able to get in touch with someone who can help you figure out how you can help.
And then the other question applies to the other side with the, our mental services.
Uh huh.
I think this is wonderful, this is great. Is, are there any, I guess, mission forms or anything?
They sent an opt-out form. So uh, prior to the screenings at both HAH and STEEL, a form is sent home explaining the program and what it entails, and anyone who wishes to opt out can sign the form and send it back, so it's a passive question.
So how was the screening done?
Screening was only done with eighth grade. Yeah, for, for the signs of suicide, eighth grade was screened and then grades nine through twelve were screened. Start With Hello was grade six or twelve, I heard.
Yeah, I just had a question. How was it actually done? Is it like, is it room confidentially or how does it, how's the process?
So it's, they, the counselors go into um the health classes or language arts classes, whichever classes that they're going into, and they take a, it's a paper pencil test or quick screening that they fill out at their desks with their, with their class. Then the, um, after everything's collected, the counselors go through and kind of triage based on markers that come up or answers that are given. And then depending on the counselor, they take a group of responses and they meet individually with each of those students.
And so at the Student Achievement Fair at Capitol Conference, some of the, there's at least three different groups, and it was students who have a group and they have been training to help with like suicide prevention. And I did hope that's something that Amherst has thought about, but it was great because then, according to the students that were explaining it, you know, sometimes a student is more willing to talk to a student than an adult. And so they would just have, like, so they have a training, they had their names out there, so people could like say people to come talk to, and then there's even just a QR code, like, all over the building. So if you needed to contact with someone, all you had to do was scan it and it was just like a text. And I was like, do you want to interview me? It was just a text. And I was like, um, I didn't remember exactly off the top of my head what the programs were called, but I didn't know if that was something.
Well, we, we have students that are trained both through campaigns, med tech program, they go through teen mental health first aid, and they're all trained with the, with the signs of suicide. And then with our Link Crew, they're also contact people as well. Any other questions for me?
Still other questions here, Sarah? Uh, we would move on to JBS report. If you did not purchase your cookies, they are sold out. So you're all aware of that. Buoyancy sale starts on Monday, for those of you who aren't familiar about those great things. At the board meeting, we had a intense discussion about a piece of literature that's being read there. I think we, that piece of literature is going back to the uh Curriculum Committee to review, uh, to make a decision on that, as composed and pones, both was stated at that board meeting. We also uh will be employing GPD to do some work for us on doing some soil testing and some location, because we have received three large grants from, for the CDL program, which will be a new program that will both be a high school program and an adult learning program. And we've also received another grant through State Fire to build a stimulation training for the fire program, which again will be used by the high school students as well as local fire departments will be engaged in that. And also we will be doing a program for nursing that we've received large grants for. To make that happen, we have to do some groundwork for the structure of the fire and the CDL, because we have to put some new structure in place for that. So uh, we will start that process. Hopefully those programs will all be functioning uh no later than the beginning of twenty-five school year. Some of them we hope to have in the mid-year, depending on the ground, the service for the CDL program. Questions on anything that's happening with the JBS? Great. Uh, more updates and discussions? Yes, ma'am?
Okay, um, legislative, I have an update um from Capitol Conference. Let me quickly, the Duncan Assembly, so we just had, as we discussed, the one um resolution about. about supporting legislation that protects school districts from being unfairly integrated on the, on having a safe report card if, um, students who have an IP want to defer graduation. So, um, that went past, and there were no other amendments from this board, so. New addition, amendments. So, um, the Legislative Spotlight Session occurred on Tuesday morning. Being our OSBA, um, lobbying team, they presented, and we had legislative update probably by, um, the Legislative Staff Team. So we had Senator and, um, Council Representative aides, Legislative Aides speak over their experience, and they gave some tips and feedback on how best to contact your local legislators. And then, um, we had two senators and two, um, council reps come in after that. So for the remainder of this year, um, they meet, um, three more times. So we'd already met on the fifteenth, and they meet December sixth and the thirteenth. And there are some open slots that they need to meet, uh, more times for the year. Excitedness. Um, so there was a lot of talk on House Bill proposed, House Bill 206, which is still pending in the Primary and Secondary Education Committee. So, um, briefly, it allows a district to establish a policy that authorizes superintendent to expel a student for not ordering one hundred and eighty days for actions that pose an imminent and severe endangerment to the health and safety of other students and staff members. And that law further, I didn't put it all here, but further defines what they do by imminent and severe endangerment, um, mostly bound threats or bringing weapons, um, to screen and things of that nature. Uh, it requires the superintendent to develop conditions for students to satisfy before they're reinstated. And, um, one of the conditions must include assessment by a licensed psychiatrist, psychologist, or school psychologist. The superintendent must have, um, an education plan or IP in place while they're on expulsion. And, um, before the, um, student can return, the superintendent will consult with a multidisciplinary team to consider next steps, um, at the end of their hundred-and-eighty-day period. And they gave, uh, three, I guess, three options. They can either extend expulsion, they can reinstate the student, or reinstate with, um, conditions. Um, and there was some, I guess, some, some talk in the crowd about that part, wanting people to look more into how do you determine that, and making sure there isn't any bias when they're linking that from student to student, who can, um, come back and whatnot. So, House Bill 214, again, is pending in the Primary and Secondary Education Committee. It requires schools boards to adopt, um, if passed, adopt a policy that won't prohibit, um, suspended employee or applicant to a school district to, um, ascribe to specific beliefs, political ideology, um, those types of things. It also prohibits the use of statements of commitment to specific beliefs, political ideologies, things of that nature. And, um, you can't use that as part of the evaluation criteria for employees or applicants. And also, um, this applies to students as well. So, um, districts cannot use, um, statements of commitment, again, to specific beliefs, ideologies, things like that, um, as part of the academic evaluation of students. Next slide, please. Um, Senate Bill 162, pending in the Senate Education Committee. It requires districts to provide evidence-based academic intervention services free of cost to students, um, who score at the limited level on state assessments in math or English Language Arts. The intervention must be aligned with academic instruction and, um, for ELA, it must be aligned with science and reading. And the intervention cannot supplant the students' instructional time, so you can't just remove them nilly-nilly from the classroom. And, um, beginning with the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, Department of Education and Workforce will randomly select five percent of districts for review of their academic intervention services. So if this passes, you know, we stay ready, so we will be ready. So next one, please. Um, Senate Bill 168, again, pending in the Senate Education Committee. So this is a, um, plethora of different things to spill. So they touch upon district flexibility, evaluations, dyslexia, and educators, and there are some other, um, topics as well. But for flexibility, it allows a district to renew exemptions every three years rather than only once for three years. It requires the Department of Education and Workforce to notify districts that are eligible for this. Evaluations, again, allows the districts to develop and use their own framework for teacher evaluations instead of using the one developed by the state Board of Education. In the area of dyslexia, um, it changes certain professional development requirements related to retrieving and allows the district to apply for waiver from dyslexia screening requirements if, um, the district can prove that a student previously received a dyslexia screening in a prior school year. And in terms of educators, it eliminates seniority as a preference when making reductions in non-teaching staff positions and eliminates requirements that districts enter into supplementing contracts where teachers assigned to teach classes outside of the normal school day. And, let's see, and there was some, not in particular with this proposed bill, but there's been concern of older regulation of public school districts unfairly so as compared to the actual schools that are ahead and plenty. So, um, next slide, please. Shock. Yeah. So, school bus safety, House, uh, proposed, House Bill 140, is pending in the House Transportation Committee. Governor DeLonge put together a, um, school transportation safety committee, so they're working on, um, putting in penalties, cam, uh, cameras on school buses and, uh, school bus graphics. So for the penalties, uh, it enhances penalties for failure to stop or stop school bus. Um, I appreciate base fines and time frames for, um, license, possible license suspension. Establishes new penalties if the offender has a previous violation within, uh, five years. Cameras, uh, it would require the Department of Public Safety to authorize for the construction and design of school bus camera equipment. Districts can install these cameras solely for the purpose of capturing an image or video of, um, a driver that, you know, violates the law, so they just fly on by, pass a stop bus. And it also allows law enforcement to use these images and video to identify people. I thought that was great. And then school bus graphic, uh, so it requires a registrar in order to be able to create and issue, um, graphics for each deputy registrar location to display. And the graphic must ensure drivers to stop and yield to a stopped school bus that is loading or unloading. Next slide, please. Again, with school bus safety, House Bill 279, again, it's pending. It requires each school bus to have seat belts for each student within five years, for each bus that they have. And requires the Ohio State Highway Patrol to enforce, um, seat belt enforcement as part of their, uh, regular inspections. So the, there's some mixed feelings, mostly financial with this bill. And, next slide, please. Okay, yeah. Legislative, so the Legislative Staff, they came and, um, just spoke about their experiences and gave some tips with, you know, they said districts should have a relationship with both Senator and, um, House Rep. They said the superintendent should have a, um, ongoing relationship with local legislators and try to meet with them on a monthly basis. Um, and they said that, um, for school visits, the best days would be Mondays, Thursdays, and Fridays, since they're in session, their sessions are missing Tuesdays and Wednesdays. For meetings that you have with them, they're, they said you have, uh, sometimes the meeting's like fifteen minutes, and they're walking from one meeting to another or something. So they said make sure you have something that we can talk about, stick to those topics. And then send a follow-up email, um, after, which helps their legislative aide, you know, remembering, remembering what he said. And then communications, make sure that they're direct to your legislator, and they're not like, um, I guess they say a lot of people, if there's call to action, there's like this standard form or something that people usually send, and they can get thousands of them. And they do their best to look through all of them, but, um, a lot of times, well, we just use this form, so we're just going to, you know, put it here. So they said, um, your communication should be more of, there's, um, some direct question or, um, action in email. And, um, they said also try to build a relationship with the legislative aides, so they can kind of get your communication, um, yes, some top lists or something, or, you know, whatever. So get their attention. And, last one, um, OSBA has, oh, that one. Yeah, so, um, the senators and, um, house reps came in, and, um, they just spoke a little bit on what their individual, I guess, focus is at the moment. So Representative Rur was more about, um, this former educator. He went up to assist on, he's a former superintendent as well. So he is focusing on even better track of retired teachers that they retire to avoid disciplinary action. And then also, he's a proponent of, you know, not getting, districts not getting deemed for deferred graduation, um, from IP students. Representative Brennan, he's also a, um, former teacher. And he is more into deregulation of, um, local school districts and looking at teacher certification, um, considerations. Senator Ingram, she is a former OSBA president, and she's looking at, um, I didn't understand too much about what she was saying, but, um, rain vans, something about changing the rain vans back. It's something I, I didn't understand, sorry. And there's a lot of work to be done with some of these bills in terms of making sure, you know, people can do things in an unbiased way if possible. And then, uh, Senator Brennan, um, he is, um, focusing on continuing to phase in the personal funding plan. Literacy with female, like, science reading, all that great stuff. And then, um, he's really big right now on attendance issues. And he is proposing like a specialized court or whatnot, um, for that. So there was some, you know, comments or whatever, proud of. You know, we kind of know, for the most part, who really has attendance issues, and by trying to have more, more involvement, that doesn't really help of that demographic. So, um, next slide, I think it's the last one. Yeah, so OSBA was just saying ways to, uh, remain involved. Invite your local legislators for school visits, continue communicating with them, build relationships, and, um, let OSBA know if there's any issues with, um, districts implementing some of these, um, new changes with new legislation. That was his pass, so. That is it.
Questions for Dr. Messer? I said questions for you. Do you have any questions for Dr. Messer on her in-depth report on legislative issues?
Sorry.
There's a lot out there. So we appreciate you taking all the time to stab on that. Any other, uh, board updates or discussions that we need to have this evening? Any more? Not, we'll move to item ten, personal recommendations.
Yeah, the board's had a chance to review all the items on the agenda tonight, so I'd like to recommend personal recommendation items, uh, ten A through ten P to consideration.
You have a motion and a second? If a second is a discussion or comments or questions on any items under ten. No questions or no comments? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis, aye. Dr. Messer, aye. Mrs. Wackels, aye. Mr. Zepha, aye. Mr. Engel.
Educational recommendations?
I just have a few, um, educational recommendations. Just want to thank the board heavily that we had two things come in in the last day or two with our cheerleading. And actually, one of the cheerleading events already occurred, we're going to board approve tonight. So basically, as we're, we're aware that cheerleaders are attempting to qualify for nationals. So, um, they did not at Johnstown, so that, that's why we have two more on there, two more attempts. One's going to be in Allentown, if they can make that one, then, uh, Wilkes-Barre Township in PA. And so just want to thank the board for considering that and approving those overnight trips to see if we qualify for nationals. So with that, I'd recommend education items eleven A through eleven B.
You have a motion and a second, is there discussion or comments or questions on any of the items under eleven? Hearing none, receiving none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis, aye. Mrs. Wackels, aye. Dr. Messer, aye. Mr. Zepha, aye. Mr. Engel.
Business recommendations?
Well, let's start with business recommendations, twelve A, twelve B first, and then we'll do twelve C separately. So let's, I recommend, I think it's twelve A and B.
Entertained a motion? You have a motion, a second, twelve A and B, comments or discussions, questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis, aye. Mrs. Wackels, aye. Dr. Messer, aye. Mr. Zepha, aye. Mr. Engel.
Motion passed without a delay all the time this evening. We entertain business recommendation, twelve C?
Correct, it's, uh, it's our role to approve library trustees, and so Library Central recommendation, uh, a week ago, for, to renew the term of Jay Wackles for another seven-year term for the library trustee. And so it's our board's job to put that on our agenda and approve it. So I'd like to make the recommendation for twelve C.
Twelve, second.
Motion and a second, just remember we have no stay, all we do is approve. So we don't have any say in that. So does anyone have any questions on that, or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll. Roll, who? Please call the roll.
Who, my first and second? No, second, okay.
First and second.
Mrs. Gillis, aye. Dr. Messer, aye. Mrs. Wackels, whose name? Mr. Zepha, aye. Mr. Engel.
Aye. I don't think there's a need to go into an executive session this evening, as I'm aware of.
No?
Correct. With that, I entertain a motion for adjournment, item fourteen. You have a motion and a second for adjournment, is there discussion or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis, aye. Mrs. Wackels, aye. Dr. Messer, aye. Mr. Zepha, aye. Mr. Engel, aye.
I was just going to thank our audience for being here tonight, and also just wanted to say happy Thanksgiving, save travels for going, or save hosting for hosting.